First item, please.
Roll call, Hussein Barry here. Fadwa Hamud.
Here.
Mary Lane.
Not here.
Celia Nasser.
Here.
Mary Petrichoff.
Here.
James Thorpe.
Here.
And Chair Michael Mead.
Here. Next item, please.
Next item, approval of minutes. Recommended action, move to approve the minutes of the regular Board of Trustees Meeting held on June 18th, 2018, and the special Henry Ford College Board of Trustees Meeting held on July 16th, 2018.
So moved.
Support?
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
I can't even remember what I read.
All those in favor of the minutes as proposed indicate by saying aye. If those oppose, it's unanimous. Next item, please.
Mary, you know you were on the record when you said that, right? Okay.
I was refreshing right now. I'm a speed reader.
Recognition and acknowledgements?
Item three, recognition and acknowledgements. Do we have any?
You guys do. Go on.
Somebody reading?
Yay! We got someone.
Oh, here she comes.
She took the scenic route.
Thank you President Cavalluna, Chair Mead, and the members of the board. My name is Whitney Larmend. I'm a proud student ambassador of Henry Ford College, and I've been working with admissions and recruiting for four months. I have been working, oh, excuse me. I'm engaged in science, which is my major. I'm enrolled in HFC since August 2016, and I plan to graduate this December. After graduation, I plan to accept an internship at Ford Motor Company for research science. I also plan to further my education for a four-year institution and ultimately receive a bachelor's degree in chemical science. Now, I am pleased to read this month's HFC Board of Acknowledgements. During the 2017-2016-2018, excuse me, academic year, HFC's food pantry, The Hawks' Nest, serves 243 students. We received 9,292 pounds of donated food, 2,902 donations of personal care items, and $1,905.35 in voluntary donations. On July 24th, HFC Career Services Office conducted a small job fair for students completing a short summer class in the fields of robotics and solid works. Twenty-five students attended the event, and employees provided positive feedback. On August 3rd to 5th, the ceramic area had a presence at the top of the hill throughout the Dearborn homecoming event. Ceramic techs Patty Goodell and Centurion Frost, along with students Denise Wyden and Katie Warden, joined Steve Glazer in demonstrations throughout the weekend. Many of the wares for sale were made by Patty Goodell and Steve Glazer. A traditional homecoming pledge states that all the proceeds go towards scholarships and their program funds. Slightly more than $600 was raised. On August 18th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., HFC Enrollment Services will host Super Saturday, an enrollment open house, to help new and returning students take care of enrollment needs. The financial aid department will also be available to answer all questions about funding. Students will be able to obtain their HFC, their official HFC, student ID card as well. The Office of Student Activities will run Get Out the Vote campaign to encourage students to vote on Election Day. A voter registration drive will be held on the campus from August 27th to October 3rd, 2018. Students will be asked to sign a pledge card as a commitment to vote. A student voting guide will also be created to give students printed information on the entire voting process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Next item, please.
Item number four, president's item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Secretary, and good evening, trustees. I have several things to address with you all, and I have to confess, I have watched your meetings in the past, and I've watched interim President Satkowski and his delivery of information to you all, and much of that will guide me in how I direct the information tonight and in the future. But I want you to know that my first and most earnest goal is to give you all value for your time that you spend here at our Board of Trustees Meeting. So today will be my first time to give you an update on what the college has been doing, at least from the cabinet level and some below the cabinet level. But if you find that in the future you could use more information on one aspect of what we're talking about, or if you could use a little less information, feel free to tell me what is useful for you all in your oversight and partnership role. And taking with what I said about interim President Satkowski and what he had set out for you as something, I think probably as a valuable expectation, is a discussion of the budget and the cash flow. Those documents are in the folders that Ms. Dimitrio has made available for you at each of your stations there, and the fact that she put them there makes me absolutely confident that they're there. If I were to put them there, I might wonder a bit, but these documents should be familiar to you in some regards, and I'm going to give you a little bit of information on each of them, but please feel free to let me know if you'd like to get more information. Of course, we just finished the fiscal year here at the college, and one of the most important documents that you'll see associated with the end of the fiscal year is something we call the unaudited general fund report. That's the document that, it looks like a landscape printout of a spreadsheet, and at the top left, it says Henry Ford College Fiscal Year 2017 to 2018, and then unaudited in the parentheses. This document, as I hope, has become somewhat familiar to you, is a look at how we did in our budget for the last fiscal year. And I'm proud to report that frankly, all the people that you trust and support in the leadership of this college are responsible for the good news in this document. I frankly can't take any credit for this, but I am proud to point to my colleagues who have been good with the public's dollars and good in delivering collegiate education. The, of course, the biggest and most important number is probably in the bottom right-hand corner, and that would be at the end of our fiscal year, and of course, remember, our fiscal year ends at the end of June, and we're just short of $1 million when you look at our revenues versus our expenses. Now, please don't see that as something to indicate that we made more than we should have. Please see that as being some indications of some good stewardship here at the college. First, that cause of more revenue than we expected as relates expenses is as a result of higher enrollment than what our team had forecast. Second, we have been increasing our efforts to decrease bad debt, and that has gained us some benefit on this. And then, third, some of the positions that you all have seen become vacant over the past have not been filled, and we very likely will fill most of those positions. However, in the time that our year continues without carrying those salaries, we do see savings there. Of course, most institutions will tell you when you lose a staff member, it is, on the whole, a more expensive process because of searching for someone and also the inefficiencies of finding work coverage for that. But for those three factors, you can see that we have, we have been good to our word about spending not more than we bring in, and frankly, we've brought in more than we expected. Any questions on this document? The other document is an important document, and it is a cash forecast for the next year. It's got various colors on it, and it is the work of John Satkowski and his team explaining to you all what we expect to have as a cash flow for every year for the next fiscal year. And you'll recall that we have been honoring an auditor's recommendation that we keep in the vicinity of 20% of our entire budget on hand, and that's about $20 million. Now, at any given date, we may have less cash flow than that, and we want to make sure that we never get, reach a point where we can't literally pay the bills. So what Mr. Satkowski's team has gone and done is forecast, and if you look at the very last page of this document, in the bottom right, there's a blue box. For every year, you'll see he's forecasted when we'll have our lowest point in cash flow, and he's done that because if he has more than a base balance of zero, then he wishes to invest that money in investment-returning vehicles. And if we're doing as well as we should be, that, those investments can deliver to this college substantial income, particularly when we are carrying what our auditors recommend as a 20% reserve. In real dollars, folks, that last year was over $250,000 of investment income that Mr. Satkowski and his team were able to earn this college by just simply investing the reserves we have at this college. If you would like more details about this information, I'd be happy to talk with you about it or answer any questions on it right now. The next thing I wanted to talk to you about is where I was last week. Last week, I had the pleasure of visiting with a group that I know you all are aware of, and I think, I'm hopeful that we can increase our interaction with. That's the Association of Community College Trustees, which is based in Washington, D.C., and put on a conference for three days, well, two and a half days, in Washington for new presidents and new trustees. And one of my goals there was to gain a knowledge of best practices, both for presidents and boards of trustees, and I gained much in that respect. I also wanted to build up my ability to consult with other leaders of other community colleges across our country to understand how they are facing the challenges that we all are facing every day. The executive director of that group is a man who I befriended, and I hope to bring him here in the next couple of months to talk with you all about best practices on Board of Trustees governance, and my hope is also to contemplate setting up some training for new trustees so that this institution and you all can, whenever, whenever this board moves forward, you can hand off to your successors a process so that new trustees have some idea of what's expected of them and what best practices are. My plan is to do that in a semi-regular basis in addition to the information that's provided at these Board of Trustees meetings. I'm in consultation with our legal counsel, Amy Clark, about how to do that type of training while also complying with Michigan's Open Meetings Act, and I do believe we'll be able to do that. Any questions about, before I go to questions on that, I did take copious notes, as you might imagine, but Ms. Dimitrio will attest to my handwriting being somewhat less than legible. So I'm in the process of giving those notes to her and producing them all for you so you can see what types of information came out of that meeting, and I think Trustee Pelishkov, you had a question?
Well, just on inviting somebody to come speak with us, I would assume, because I've already asked that we, that we meet as both a P-12 cabinet and superintendent and the college cabinet and college president and all the trustees, to go over our board policies thoroughly so that everybody has a good understanding of what they are and how we're expected to honor them. I would hope that we could kind of mesh this potentially and maybe have a workshop day where we include that kind of an experience for all of us, so that we're all kind of on the same page in understanding what our roles are.
Well, I appreciate that comment, Trustee Pelishkov. I will tell you that it became very apparent to me, to all that were in that attendance of that conference, that one of the best practices is for at least a semi-annual, you know, I always mess up semi-annuals, that twice a year or every other year?
No, twice a year.
Twice a year, okay. So what?
Annual's one year, semi's half.
It's clear to me that it's good for trustees to engage in training workshops/retreat at least once every other year. And if you all, in your consultation with each other, elect to direct me to organize that, I'll be happy to do it. I've already started talking with my staff about some topics that would be useful as it relates to our bylaws themselves, and of course, in any event, when the board directs me to act, I'll do that, and I'll just say now that I think it'd be a great idea for you all to consider directing me and my staff to do that.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to give you a heads up, because I'm the director.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions on my time in Washington with that group?
Did you also get a chance to meet with any representatives from the state of Michigan?
The answer is no, but it's not without effort. As you may know, Vice President Reginald Best, and I have been working on our outreach efforts, and I, and Ms. Dimitrio also worked on our efforts, and it just so happened that last week, Congress was not in session. And I think you got a lot of, "No, we're not around." Is that right, Ms. Dimitrio? So I made effort on that front, but I was not able to secure meetings. Any other questions?
Was it clear that we're the best?
I took every opportunity.
Were the best trustees or?
Altogether.
Trustee Hamud, I will say that every opportunity that availed itself, I made it clear that there was one community college in the country that deserved the best title, and it was us. There was some spirited debate on that front, though, and I would encourage any of you all who are interested to take part in that organization. They are committed to helping trustees, and I saw a lot of people like you all there who frankly were doing public service in your roles here and need the support of fellowship with other people dealing with the same issues you're dealing. And frankly, none of those trustees are getting rich, so it's people who are doing it for the right reason, and I think you would find it useful to engage with them. However, Trustee Pelishkov, I am not in the seat to do direction here to you, so don't take that as a direction, just a suggestion. I've also been taking part in a listening tour, and that was what I promised you all when I sat, asking you to be your colleague, and I had promised you all that my intention would be to come to this institution, not with the idea that I had all the answers, but in contrast to that, the idea that the best leaders listen to what those in the institution have to say about what is happening in the institution. And so I've directed my staff to help me identify those that I should interact with over the first 90 days of my time here. I've handed you all, and I think I've given you access to frankly, whenever you'd like it, but I've also handed it to you now, and that is a spreadsheet of the stops that I've made on my listening tour. I have found this extraordinarily useful. You probably recall that, excuse me, it involves employees of the college, stakeholders in our surrounding area, political leaders of Dearborn and around us, and it has been very informative to me, and I'm just about six weeks in. And again, I invite any of you all to tell me who you would recommend be added to this list or doubled up. You'll see on that document that, and by the way, this is a public document, for whoever wants to look at it, it's open. You'll see when I met with them, several of these people on this list I've met with multiple times, but the first indication is when I met with them first. I've also met with the collective bargaining leaders of this institution and the membership of those collective bargaining units, and as you may recall, me being a former member of a collective bargaining unit, I have a particular belief that those groups should have access to leadership and should have the understanding that candid communication is what is best. Ms. Dimitrio gave me what I call the gauntlet, which was, and I say Ms. Dimitrio because she is the one who controls my calendar and almost everything in my work life, and she deserves a lot of credit for that. And that has resulted in, I think, several multiple-hour meetings. Of course, I've met with the AFT Local 1650, John McDonald, I believe he was, I don't think he was there, Ms. Dimitrio, I think. Disregard that. I think that one, it's actually coming up. I met with David Cunningham, who of course is the leader of Local 71, and that was a spirited discussion in the Forfa Auditorium. I have met with President Kim Keier of the SSA, and that resulted in a lot of feedback. And let me just be candid with you, trustees, nobody's holding back. I mean, and that's great. That's, that is good for me to learn what is good and what is bad, and frankly, what I'm asking everyone is three questions. What's working well? What's needing to be improved, and what is so desperately broken it needs to be fixed immediately? I'm taking notes. My cabinet is not attending these meetings with me so that the most candid conversation can take place, and we're responding to them. In fact, I just had dinner with Vice President Satkowski, who was telling me about how some materials in the café, I think one of the grills and one of the, say it louder?
Steam trays?
Yes, the steam trays needed to be fixed, and that came out of these meetings. So staff are seeing that we're responding to, and the collective bargaining units are seeing we're going to respond to their interests. I have met with political leaders, I've met with the mayor of our fine city here in Dearborn, I've met with the mayor of the city, that's that small city to our north and east, otherwise known as Detroit, and I've told them both, we want to be partners with your administrations. We want to be seen as the place where students come to gain excellent education, career training, and if you have an idea of how we can do better at Henry Ford College, we're all ears. I also have told you all that it's important that we evaluate whether funding can come from something other than the traditional three legs of the stool, and there are essentially two avenues for that, in my belief. One is legislative action, and Vice President Best and I have been to Lansing, I think, I think I've been there twice, and Mr. Best went with me once. We met with the director of Governor Snyder's Budget Process, and we most recently met just this morning with the Ford Foundation. We have met with the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation, and our plan is to engage the W.K. Kellogg Foundation, all with, all with the message that Henry Ford College is worthy of investment. And I have to say, I think we're making progress, and whether we're making progress or not, we're going to keep, we're going to keep knocking on the doors. I've also frankly asked to meet with leaders of institutions around us. I met with the president of Schoolcraft College today, and I just enjoyed an opportunity to sit down with him and ask him, it's a man of 19 years tenure there, tell him that I wanted to learn from him, to be partners with him, not antagonists, and he was very helpful and warm in his suggestions about how we proceed. He also is going to his Citizens with a Millage in November, and we talked about legislative strategies that we could do together. That is a, and I know it sounds like it wasn't brief, but that really is a brief summary of the listening tour that we've been going on, and I have to tell you, I'm energized, I'm excited about this job. When I meet with the staff here particularly, I come away with two strong, strong beliefs that make me proud to be part of this institution. One of them is the people who work here are here for the right reasons. They care about the outcome that we are aiming to deliver, which is education for citizens. And second, that when they have problems, they're not the kind of problems that bad institutions evidence, problems in wanting to tear each other down, problems in just general malaise. In fact, what they want is more opportunity to do what they love better, and I hope to be able to deliver that, and I can't say yes to everyone about everything, but I will tell you, people here have found an intersection of passion and skill in teaching and educating. So I'm excited to be here. One of the people that I know you all know, who has passion and skill and has been delivering that for this institution for 18 years, is someone I sent you all an email and a text message about very recently, and I want you to know that it is with no, no, nothing but frankly sadness and fear that I have to make a public statement about our Vice President of Strategy and Information. Becky Chadwick, as I mentioned, has delivered fantastic service to her teammates on the cabinet. She has delivered invaluable advice, candor to you all and your predecessors on this board, and Henry Ford College frankly wouldn't be what a success it is now without her efforts. And she also did the really enenviable task of listening to a bunch of people say they want to be the president of Henry Ford College. I'm sure her ears hurt after a while. But those were, those were all the reasons why I was excited and still am excited to work with her, because she is an exemplary person, and thank goodness, I've got several people that are just as skilled as she is who are going to stay with us, which is all a long preface for me to say that I'm proud of her as a friend and a colleague, that she has decided to accept a position at a school that's about a stone's throw away from us to the south that will remain unnamed.
I graduated from there. Let's not get too carried away.
But, but she's agreed to help us for, I believe, a good handful of weeks left. We're still working out the very nitty-gritty of when her last days will be here, but I do.
2020?
I do, I do want to say that I'll be coming in the days and probably months ahead with ideas about how to fill the role, because no one will replace Becky Chadwick, and so if you would indulge me, please help me thank Becky for her years of service here at Henry Ford College. Mr. Chairman, I know that it's probably hard to believe, but that is literally all I have to say on the president's items.
Thank you very much. I hope we all get an opportunity to say something nice about Becky. I don't know when that will happen, but I'd just like to say this one thing. I don't think that we would have been, have been, that we would have been successful with accreditation without you and Betsy Combe, and that's the meat and potatoes of this organization, so that's just one of your accomplishments. We can go on forever, and I hope we do get a chance to go on forever, so when that time comes, be prepared. Okay. Next item, please.
Next item, action items. First is citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who have submitted a blue card. The secretary may speak at this time. Mr. Chair, I don't have any blue cards.
Okay.
We want a special consideration of an action item. At this point, under Report 4457, staff recommendation, we are pulling one of the appointments, Ms. Denise Allen. We're pulling that off the agenda. With that being said, other than 10, I'm not really sure if we have to pull 11. We can, just to be safe.
Oh, well, 10, 10 we have to.
10, I'm sure we do. I'm saying 11.
Yeah.
Do we need to pull 11 or no?
Well, that's a good question.
Let's pull it just to be safe. So other than 10 and 11, are there? I'm sorry?
How are we voting on 11 before we have a closed session? What do we vote? I, well, I was a little confused by 11.
I think, I think 11 is put there in case we decide to go into closed session, that when we come back, then we vote to go back.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So we can't, we have to pull it because we can't vote on it right now.
It's a sequence.
Let's, let's pull.
That's what I thought.
Okay. Let me finish my, other than 10 and 11, are there any action items on this agenda which board members or the president wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the action below.
Any other items? None?
Recommended action, move to approve action items 1 through Recommended action, move to approve action items 1 through 9 as recommended in this agenda.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's unanimous. Next item?
We'll go on to action item number 10. Calling for a closed session. Move to enter into a closed session to discuss with our attorneys trial strategy in the pending lawsuit of Entron LLC versus Henry Ford College pursuant to MCL-15.268-E, because discussion on the open record will be detrimental to our opinion and also to discuss material exempt from discussion or disclosure by the attorney-client privilege, MCL-15.243-1-G pursuant to
So.
Support.
Mr. Chairman, before you call a vote on that, I just would like the record to reflect that there is the possibility that this closed session may involve other items other than that listed by the secretary. However, all of those would fall under the citation of the Michigan statute that the secretary just read, because they all are pending lawsuits or legal issues, and I just would like the open record to reflect that if the board does decide to vote in favor of a closed session, the lawsuit that trustee Barry has mentioned will not be the only issue that will be discussed. I'm sorry for interjecting, Mr. Chairman, but that's all I have.
Hearing that, it's been moved and supported, all those in favor of.
We're going to go into roll call vote.
Oh, it's a roll call.
Hussein Barry, yes.
Yes.
Fadwahamud?
Yes.
Celia Nasser?
Yes.
Mary Petrikov?
Yes.
James Thorpe?
Yes.
Chair Michael Mead?
Who?
Chair Michael Mead.
That'd be me, yes.
So who's leaving now?
Are we leaving, or they leaving?
What's that?
We're leaving, I guess.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that if this, I believe the votes carry the motion, if you'll take my indulgence, I would suggest that the Board of Trustees meet in the President's conference room upstairs.
Yeah, please.